Call to me, the order, vocal please.
Mr. Kaminski?
Here.
Mr. Desarna?
Here.
Mrs. Joffrey?
Here.
Mayor Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Munoz?
Present.
Mrs. McKnight?
Here.
Mrs. Beliska?
Present.
Let's look at the flag. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we go on further, I just want to wish everybody a happy Diwali, may the light prevail over darkness. So, I know there were a lot of celebrations last night and, you know, we hope everybody had a joyous time. This is a public, the Borough Council of New Providence, County Union State, New Jersey, and a notice has been given in accordance of P L nineteen seventy-five. Chapter two thirty-one, that annual notice of revision was made in accordance with six. Chapter thirteen, any act. We have a public hearing on ordinance twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash twelve. Please read the title.
In ordinance of the Borough of New Providence to establish a registry for business insurance certificates.
What this is, is a registry that the state has mandated every municipality to do. Drive a motion, please.
A second.
Okay, at this time, anybody wishing to address council with that ordinance and that ordinance only? Please raise your hand. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, vocal please.
Mr. Kaminski?
Aye.
Mr. Desarna?
Aye.
Mrs. Joffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes.
Mrs. McKnight?
Yes.
Mrs. Beliska?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance thirteen, please read the title.
In ordinance of the Borough of New Providence to amend the borough code to add a new chapter one sixty-six titled lead paint testing.
This is also mandated by the state for testing lead paint in multifamily housing. Kind of motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Anybody wishing to ask council on this ordinance and this ordinance only? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, vocal please.
Mr. Kaminski?
Aye.
Mr. Desarna?
Aye.
Mrs. Joffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes.
Mrs. McKnight?
Yes.
Mrs. Beliska?
Aye.
Couple of weeks ago, we had National History and Heritage Day. And it was a great program that was put on by members of our community. And one of the names I can think of is one of the... Mick made this beautiful picture handmade, intricate, it's just unbelievable. And, you know, he gave it to us at that, that, uh, at that present, he presented it to us at that celebration. But I wanted you to show everybody this picture that you made, you know, at, at council meeting because I think it's important. And you want to explain much of it?
Uh, yeah, so, um, I guess, so basically the prop for it was, you need those inclusivity first nominations, which I had put there. Basically, I guess incorporated all the different, um, flags and just included everybody in it just to really, you know, hit home with the actual, you know, message that it's supposed to, uh, bring out, you know, to everybody else. And I wanted to make it very colorful, um, other than just the flags, because, uh, you know, I mean, that's, that's what it's all about. You know, the colors, the, the culture, everything like that. And this sun here is actually, it's, um, it's like, it's used a lot throughout like pottery and everything like that. So it's very well known. So I decided to put it there, have Americas there, you know, with the different flags, you know, in it so that it could show that there's Latinos and Latinos all throughout America. And so, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Well, we're going to hang this permanently somewhere in the borough. And if anybody wants to, please really take a look at this because there's a lot of intricate detail in here. Just incredible. Thank you, Mick.
I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You certainly have some incredible talented students in town here. Okay, you'd approve all minutes for October eleventh.
So moved.
Sir.
On favor?
Yes.
No, so be it. We have a, uh, a letter here from Louisa Sagan Dorf at the high school and middle school traffic. I see Louisa's here tonight. The, the Providence Police Department counted cars on Valentine from nine twenty-seven to ten four. There were two, two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight vehicles on the road for an average of three hundred and nine cars per day. Of the two thousand sixty-eight, sixteen hundred and twenty were traveling twenty-four miles per hour or less. So, um, we did send about the, we got the letter, sent the police out there to take a look at it. So, but, um, you know, we will get back to the traffic division, see if we can't get something else done at Valentine. Okay, Eastern States Environmental, it's a hardship exception that's fair over by Barstool Market. Okay, and I know he's working with the E P to get that done. Okay, State of New Jersey, Department of Transportation, Safe Roots to School. And we are currently working with two different companies to get those grants fulfilled. Okay, any comments?
Yep.
Okay, tell the business, uh, engineering mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is resolution twenty twenty-two dash two six-three, which is a resolution accepting the proposal of Collier Engineering and Design, Inc. For professional engineering services regarding the New Providence Memorial Library H V A C unit replacement project. So we are approving, excuse me, Colliers Engineering just for the design and the bid services to replace three roof mounted A C units over at the library. That's not to exceed ninety-five hundred dollars. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two six-four is a resolution approving shared services agreement for wastewater operations and maintenance between the Borough of New Providence and the City of Summit. So this is our three-year shared service agreement with the City of Summit. Um, this is where the borough assumes operations and maintenance of four sewer system pump stations is outlined in the agreement, um, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two six-five is a resolution refunding partial cost of construction permit number twenty-two dash three three eight four two. This is a partial refund, homeowner, uh, applied for a permit to do a construction job, renovation, and decided not to move forward. So we are refunding their, their fee minus twenty percent for the review of the plans.
Okay, finance, might as well keep going, Matt.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two six-six is a resolution approving the filing of C Y twenty twenty-two, S F Y twenty twenty-three, Best Practices Inventory Questionnaire. This is our annual best practice checklist. This year, sixty-nine questions in total. Every year we get this checklist. Um, it asks a bunch of questions for our best practices in the borough. We answer the questions, send it back to the state. Uh, based on the answer to the questions, we get scored and our score is above a hundred percent, which is, uh, which basically means the borough will receive its full state aid, uh, from New Jersey State in next year's budget.
Okay, we, uh, let me see license for...
Uh, one more, one more, one more.
Oh, sorry, buddy.
It's okay. Resolution twenty-two dash two six-seven is a resolution authorizing payment of the attached bills payable list in the amount of four hundred ninety-eight thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars and fifteen cents. Two significant items there. W E Timberman Co., one hundred and twenty-seven thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars for the replacement of a leaf vacuum, which is a very important time of year. And the State of New Jersey, one hundred and two thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars for our October state health benefit premium.
Okay, we have a, uh, limited license to, for Chahi Nakhram from Summit Express. It was properly prepared and reviewed. Uh, Public Works, Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have resolution twenty twenty-two dash two sixty-eight. This is a resolution awarding contract to Grand Sanitation Service, uh, sixteen thirty South Second Street in Plainfield, New Jersey, for recycling collection and marketing. Um, we had... Before that, that we were going out to bid for the recycling collection. It's, it's for recycling collection and marketing. It's for the years twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven. The entire amount is two million, six thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. It's a six point eight percent increase over what we were current, over what we're currently paying. Um, but it also includes three percent increases each year. So from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven, there's going to be a three percent bump every year in that cost. Um, another thing that's changed is that recycling, um, starting in January, will be moved to Wednesdays. I know that we're all used to Fridays. Now, remember to put it up on Tuesday night, so we collect it on Wednesdays. On January fourth will be the first pickup on the east side, and then January eleventh will be the first pickup on the west side of town. Um, I just wanted to, while we're talking about recycling, just give a little bit of background as to what we look for when we're looking at these recycling companies. Um, and there's a couple of different components that, that we require. Um, bidders, you know, they have to prove by experience that they're capable of collecting, processing, and/or marketing recyclable materials. They have to give us references from municipalities such as ours that with, you know, similar requirements and comparable size and population, um, they have to make sure, or we make sure that they have the appropriate equipment and personnel available to do everything that we're asking them to do. The successful bidder is responsible for the curbside collection of the recyclable materials from all housing units plus nine municipal government buildings. And altogether, we've got, so nine municipal government buildings plus four thousand six hundred and twenty-four single family homes. And the contractor is going to provide a report on a monthly basis to our municipal recycling coordinator as to how much they've collected. So that's a very detailed, uh, specific report with designated weights of each and every recyclable that they've collected. After Grand Sanitation collects the material, it goes over to Bay Shore Recycling Corporation in Keysby, Keysby, New Jersey, and that's where it gets marketed. So they're the ones that actually then separate it and market it out. Uh, they separate aluminum, steel, tin cans, glass bottles and jars, plastics, which include milk, water, soda, laundry containers, newspapers, cardboards, your junk mail. Um, so that look at, uh, they, they collect it commingled, they separate it and market it from there. Just a little background for you.
Right, just real quick, the, um, Recycle Coach app as well, right?
That will be updated. So the calendars, the Recycling Coach app and the website, um, will be updated with the new pickup for recycling.
I live by that thing, I love it.
Yeah, I did go on Wednesday, so... Okay, any discussion items?
I have one, Mr. Mayor. Uh, last night, Councilman Desarna and myself met with Tom Fode, uh, who is with the, uh, New Providence Community Pool Corporation. As you know, the, uh, Community Pool for New Providence is a, uh, its own separate entity from the borough. The borough owns the property, but we lease to the New Providence Pool Corporation, and they run all of the operations, uh, for it. Uh, they're still recovering from, uh, the devastating effects that COVID had on their budget from a couple of years ago. So, you know, they have enough money to run their own operations. They don't, they don't have enough money to, uh, use on any capital projects or improvements that they would like to make. So Tom came to us and he said, you know, Rob and Pete, several years ago, the, the town and the community pool worked together to do the basketball court there now. So they're lit, they're fenced in, uh, in the summers during the mornings, they're used by the borough for our rec programs. And then in the afternoons, it's turned over to the, uh, pool board for them to use for their, uh, guests. And then at night, it's opened up again to the general public. Uh, and those have been by far in one of the biggest hits that we've ever done in New Providence. Uh, you know, if you go by that basketball court anytime at night, you'll see kids, uh, playing there all the time. Uh, so he said he would like to do another similar project, uh, where, uh, the pool board is envisioning doing a sand or a beach volleyball, uh, court, kind of where the shuffleboard, shuffleboard, uh, courts are now. So they would move those to a different part of the pool, uh, regrade that area where they're, where the shuffleboard courts are now, and then put in a beach volleyball, um, facility or, you know, area there. Uh, but that's going to cost money for the regrading, for the remove, for the moving of the shuffleboard courts. They would also envision doing a, um, a permanent table tennis, uh, you know, uh, table, I guess, there as well. Um, so he's looking to gauge the borough's interest in doing another deal like we did when we built, uh, the basketball courts. I think we split that, when, remember, was it, was it eighty-twenty?
I don't, I'll have to look it up.
But, so he's looking to gauge your interest, would be, uh, able to do something like that again, uh, so they could do the, the, uh, beach volleyball.
Do they have any idea what the cost is?
Yeah, so he's figuring, uh, it'll cost about a hundred and fifty, kind of rough numbers, uh, before they engage an engineer to start looking at the actual numbers. He just kind of wants to get, uh, appeal from us.
And I think we really have to work it into our capital if, if we decide.
I agree.
I think it's too early to decide now, but, you know, I think that's something we should...
Something to put in the staging of our cap, that, that's a very good point, man.
Yeah, and he understands, he understands that. He knows that it's not going to, you know, we're not going to give a decision, and it'll be done overnight.
The only, the only thing I, I, and that was a great recap, by the way. Um, you know, he, he brought up some interesting things. You know, the pool is obviously, you know, we all central to our community and really a, a hub, um, services a lot of, of, of members and a lot of, um, a lot of residents. He also, uh, you know, Tom is also pretty forward-looking as far as making sure that wanting the community, the pool to stay relevant with, with teenagers and, and, and people. So, um, that's why he wants to continue to do these type of, of projects. Um, so I think it's, it's worth to take a look at it.
Rob, would the, uh, would the, um, volleyball courts be open to the public outside of the pool?
Yeah, so it would be just like the basketball courts. It would fence it off and be open to the public, to the rec department during the day, uh, in the mornings at least in the summers, and then to the, to the pool, uh, in the afternoons and evenings. Um, so he did talk to Allison Smith, who's our rec department head, and she said, yeah, they would be interested in, uh, sharing that kind of a court. And they could put together programming for the borough.
That was my exact question. I was wondering if they, if it would operate the same way with residents being able to use it. And it makes a lot of good sense because I think right now they have three shuffleboard courts there.
Right.
And to be honest, nobody really uses them for that. They have them now for cornhole. They have them, they do have a table tennis that's on one of the shuffleboard courts right now. Uh, so that's much better usage of that space than what it's assigned for right now.
Yeah, so they, so they noticed a trend of older teenagers not coming back to the community pool once they kind of hit high school. So he wants to try to bring them back, uh, by, you know, hopefully, you know, having to venture them, uh, at the beach volleyball court. They also host a number of teen nights, uh, that are just for teens. He also wants to hold activities for seniors as well, so that teenagers could come and use the pool, uh, you know, free of charge on a particular day. Uh, and I think he's also looking to put together maybe a community kind of event where the whole town can come and use the pool for free on a particular day.
So, so I've, I've looked into beach volleyball, right? I was trying to find a place to put it, right? A couple of different parks in town, like where can we put Warren Minkin? There's a spot, maybe at Oakwood, there's a spot. Maybe, you know, so we were looking and the, the drawback was that we couldn't find enough space that we could also fence it in because it's important to have it fenced in or else, you know, animals come in at night and, you know, things of that nature. So, so having that in that spot with a fenced-in location, I mean, it checks the boxes, so.
Yeah.
So I think it's a good thing.
Look, you got your bathing suit on anyway, open it.
Sounds good.
Okay, yeah, let's, uh, let's put it on for the capital review. And we'll see where we're at. Okay, any other discussion items? Nadine and I went to the hundredth anniversary of the, uh, Summit, New Providence Trophy Club. And that, that was, that was, it was really nice.
Very nice.
I didn't know they did all the things that they said they would.
Amazing interaction with the kids and handing out dictionaries. And then now to the middle school, they hand out that word from Independence and constitutions. It's great.
Um, the Tri-Poly, which was held, held in conjunction with the P B A, in conjunction with the Lions Club, was very, very well attended. Everybody had a good time and, uh, they had some winners on the pumpkin carving too. It was a great family, uh, uh, day. Um, Halloween this year, we know it's Monday. Uh, in the past, we said you had to put a table out by the driveway. You can go back to normal if you want to put a table out. I thought it was better doing it that way. Uh, get to talk with the kids and everything else, but you can do it whatever way you want. Um, we want to congratulate the girls' tennis team for being state champions. That's incredible. Um, let's see. Oh, be careful with the, that we're starting the weed pickup, especially when it's wet. Be careful in the side streets, slippery, and you can get in accidents. And, you know, kids have a habit and bring in the piles of weeds. So, um, next chat with the mayor is November fourth. And last month was good. We had, uh, uh, you were there, Nadine, right? And Diane, you were there, and it was, it was quite nice. So, and to top it off, the library revamped their dollhouse for the kids. And I did a living cut in there. It was nice. So, um, Matt, you're next.
Okay, so last weekend, I was, uh, I was able to attend, the New Providence Cricket Club had their second annual, uh, barbecue. They're, uh, two years old. Uh, they invited, invited us, Councilman... Roy, the mayor, as well as, and Alyssa, we're all there. Um, we're getting to learn, you know, cricket. They're handing out these rewards for M V P and most batted runs. And, and I, one of them was, what was the pitching, striking pitch, right? So in baseball, striking percentage is, you know, throwing a strike. But in cricket, it's how many times you can hit the ball that's pitched. So it's kind of opposite, so, uh, pretty neat, but a really fun time. Uh, they, they run a great operation, I want to thank them. Uh, as you guys all know, we're putting in a cricket pitch at our Warner Field. And just to give everybody an update on that, um, you know, we're just waiting right now for the vendor to provide us with the cost, right? So, um, and that'll be the next steps. The next step would be for us to get the, the amount that it's going to cost, uh, if it's in our, uh, we're going through the co-op. So, uh, which is, uh, we explained, uh, a few meetings back, uh, which means we don't have to offer bid, uh, go through the co-op, which helps actually lower the cost as well. And, um, once we get that back, we'll approve that and we'll be moving forward on the pitch. Look forward to, to, uh, throwing out, uh, the first bowl. That's what it's called.
And don't forget, nine o'clock Saturday at Lincoln Field, the women are going to actually probably teach us how to play. So, uh, that should be fun.
Exhibition.
I'm looking forward to it.
That's it.
That's it. Pete?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, just real quick, community activities, two quick updates. The Recreation Department is hosting, uh, the annual N P virtual marathon again this year. Uh, join them to walk or run twenty-six dot two miles in the month of November. All participants receive a long-sleeved T-shirt and bragging rights. Registration is open now on Community Pass. So if you're interested, take a look at that. The De Corso Center continues to offer daily opportunities for seniors to socialize, recreate, uh, and learn something new as well as enjoy special activities for the holidays. So you can check out, uh, the website, W W W dot newprov.org slash seniors for that. Um, the only other thing I would add is, uh, from a capital review standpoint, and Wendy, if you could take this back to our borough administrator, I think at the last meeting, we had discussed, um, uh, getting the, the group together. And in light of our conversation today, that's probably a good idea as well. So if we could try to get that meeting sooner rather than later, that would be great. Thank you. That's it.
Okey-dokey. Um, so first, Business and Professional Association, I have a report. Um, this upcoming Saturday, October twenty-ninth, will be downtown trick or treat. Um, so downtown merchants invite all ghosts, goblins, princesses and other characters to come trick or treat in their costumes from one o'clock to three o'clock, rain or shine. Um, there should be like a little pumpkin in the window. So if you, if you go up and you see a pumpkin, go on in and get some candy. Um, the following day is our street fair. Uh, so the New Providence Street Fair, presented by Atlantic Health System and Union County Board of County Commissioners, returns to downtown New Providence on Sunday, October thirtieth. The fair will be held on Springfield Avenue between South Street and Livingston Avenue from eleven A M to five P M, rain or shine. There will be food, fun, entertainment and merchants. This event would not be possible without the generous support from our sponsors. Atlantic Health System, Union County Board of County Commissioners, New Jersey Sharing Network, P P A C Private Wealth Management, Toronto Orthodontics and Your Kids Urgent Care. So please join us. And one last call for voting for your scarecrows. So the scarecrows are on display throughout the downtown until November first. Uh, so please go into participating merchants and you can fill out a ballot to vote for your favorite scarecrow. There's a lot of really good ones this year, so it's hard to choose, um, so that's what's going on there. Uh, very quickly with, uh, the Municipal Alliance, this last Friday, we had, um, a follower drive. So we were trying, we're trying to increase our social media presence on both Instagram and Facebook. So we went to football game. Um, and what a better way to get followers, uh, on Instagram than to go find some high schoolers and give them some free merchandise. So we had some T-shirts that were donated to us by the high school. And, uh, we gave out, uh, T-shirts to, and our T-shirts, water bottles, I think little cups. And hat, oh, hats, the hats went first. Um, so a lot of high schoolers, which is great because the audience we want to reach is high schoolers educating about drug and alcohol awareness. Um, we almost tripled our number of followers on Instagram. I'm not sure about Facebook. Um, but for anybody who does want to join or follow the Alliance on Instagram, it's called New Prov Alliance. And on Facebook, it's New Providence Alliance to Prevent Alcohol and Drug Abuse. So go on to either one or both of those social media sites and follow us and keep updated on how we're bringing outstanding programs to our community. And that's it for me.
Okay, well.
Board of Health meeting tomorrow, but it's all happening.
Okay, Lisa?
Uh, I'm going to say operations are normal here. Not much going on.
I am.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Board of Education, the, uh, referendum is up for vote on, well, early voting and on the eighth. So please get out and vote. Uh, for the Historical Society, um, Four Centuries in a Weekend was last weekend. Uh, it was the best turnout that they've had ever. We had the cemetery tours backed by popular demand, and I believe that they were sold out. Well, they're free, but, um, the slots were all taken and it, a lot of younger kids actually went also, so it was a great event. Um, they're very excited that, um, the elementary schools will start to visit the Saltbox Museum again. Is spearheaded by a Providence High School student. And, um, after the, um, the games, the high school kids ran clinics for the younger kids, um, in the soccer... And um, after the, um, the games, the high school kids ran clinics for the younger kids um, in the soccer club, which was really, really great. There were well over a hundred kids participating, so not even including the high schoolers. And um, Mayor Morgan was asked to speak and he gave the kids a little pep talk and talked about our community, which was really nice. And Councilwoman Jeffrey and I were in attendance, which was a great event. So congratulations to them.
Okay, one update that I did want to give is that according, the last I heard, the bridge on Commerce Street is coming on November 1st. It'll be a sit-down, apparently they have to, they have to do some kind of construction on it while it's there. So they said that would take about a week, week and a half. Okay, we have public comments, anybody can uh, talk about that. Any comments, we're gonna limit uh, the comments to three. You can speak on any topic, anybody wishing to address council.
Hi Alan Swanson, forty-seven over Hill Road. Uh, is the contract available for the, on the recycling? Something that I'm.
Find out.
Well, we're, we just approved.
We just, oh yeah, it hasn't been written up yet, the contract or the specs?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm curious as to how the marketing works. There's no market, that's why I'm curious about the marketing. I'm just, I'm just curious as to what you're, how it's working, how it works.
But all we do is pay for the pickup.
We pay for the pickup, Grand Sanitation does that, then Grand Sanitation contracts with Bay Shore Recycling. So at that point, you know, it's Grand Sanitation that's dealing with the, with the remarketing company.
Well, the, the resolution says that it pays for the collection and marketing, that's what, that's how it reads, so I'm just responding to that.
Well, they have to, they spend money to go market it, right?
Yeah.
Our contract is giving them money to do that.
Are you, are, is there any interest in how it's marketing, marketed? My, my, the point I'm trying to get at is that we need to educate people. About, about five percent, less than ten percent of the plastic that's collected in, in this country and in this state in particular, is not recycled. So we, we, we're, we have this, this mythology that goes on that if we put it out at the end of the driveway, that we've done our duty, we've, we've recycled. We used to do that, they used to get sent to China and a lot that ended up in the ocean, whatnot. Um, so I just think it's important that we be aware and educate ourselves as to what we're paying for, is it in fact doing what it is that we're after? I, I won't belabor the point, I just, I would like to be able to look at what they say the marketing plan is.
I guess you'd really have to contact Bay Shore.
You know, yeah, I mean, because they're one removed from, we're one removed from Bay Shore. We're, we deal with Grand Sanitation, Grand Sanitation then sends it off to.
Okay, I'm, I'm just responding to the fact that the resolution states that you're paying for marketing.
We're required by the state to pick up the recycling, that's what we're required to do. That's, and, and that's what we pay for, them to pick it up. What they do with it, I guess I have to deal with the state agencies.
Okay. That's, that's fine, thank you very much.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to bring up one other thing if I may. Uh, I did, I've been, I've, I've come twice and I've said that I would help you out with accommodations for hearing loss. I sent a letter and, um, and Keith Lynch responded to, to the letter in which I offered again to come in to help you out with the system. Um, the response was that they would turn up the volume and that they had the FM system and that they complied with ADA. Um, I, I want to tell you a couple of things about ADA. Um, it means that you have to make an accommodation. If someone came in who was blind, you would need to produce the documentation in Braille if they knew how to read Braille. Or perhaps you would have to produce it in a, in a, a transcript that was in, a lot of, it's auditory transcript for the information. That would be an accommodation for someone who's blind. When I was here about three years ago, um, and I brought this up, this is before you even had the system put in. Uh, and I asked and if someone who was deaf came in, I, the response was that we would get somebody to interpret sign for them. I want to point out to you that less than one percent of people who are deaf understand sign. I'm not deaf, but uh, I know a number of people who are, including my mother. And my mother didn't know sign. We had to write things to her. So to, it is an accommodation for someone who came in and doesn't know sign, if they're deaf. The accommodation would have to be a transcription system or something like that, along those lines. The point is that accommodation means that there's a range of disability. In my case, this system, this is an FM system, there are two systems that, that you can use. FM system means that you need a receiver. And the reason I'm going over all of this is that I've asked a number of times to be able to come in and talk with people here about it. Since, since I'm able to come in anytime. And I'm taking your time up with this because I've just been sort of pushed away saying, we comply with ADA.
Oh, did uh, if I'm not mistaken, we said give the information to Bernadette and Wendy and we'll contact.
I received a response, I've received a written response saying, we'll turn the volume up and we have an FM system that complies with ADA. That was the response. What I'm saying is, this is an FM system. First of all, if you can make it work here today, good luck. Second of all, it doesn't, what, what this requires is that I would have to remove my hearing aids. And I would have to use the, this particular speaker, which first of all is inadequate. The second thing is that each person that has a hearing loss is unique. They have different frequencies, different discrimination levels. And what happens is my, my hearing aids are programmed, they're, the technology is fantastic. And so it allows me to function. Without the hearing aids, I'm dependent on the hearing aids. Without the hearing aids, we wouldn't be having this conversation or I wouldn't be hearing you in the conversation. I'm able to say whatever I have. I don't, you don't notice anything about my hearing loss because it's an acquired hearing loss. It didn't come on until I was much older, so I don't have the typical vocal patterns that someone.
Well, you know what, I'll talk to Bernadette and uh, see what combination we can come up with.
Okay, what I'm trying to do is prevent you from having an ADA complaint. Okay, so that's why I'm, and I'm taking up your time with this because, because I was pushed away.
But you're, you're saying it's ADA compliant right now.
It is, no, I'm saying Keith Lynch says it's ADA compliant. It is not ADA compliant, first of all, it doesn't work. It doesn't work and second of all, it doesn't work for me. And I have been trying to say, and, and if, and just as I pointed out, that if someone walked in the door who was deaf and you say, oh, we'll get somebody that does sign language.
I understand what you're saying.
It's meaningless to them, it's like speaking Greek to them if they don't know sign language.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm frustrated because this has been going on for me with a number of years in front of you. And this year in particular, I've offered a number of times to work out off-hours with someone here who's responsible for the system. Apparently it's Keith Lynch, he doesn't care to duly respond to my coming in and helping him with it. He responds, it's okay, we're ADA compliant and we'll turn the volume up. That's not ADA compliant.
You said that three times, I, we get it and I'll talk to Bernadette about it, okay?
And what, what would I expect will be the result?
I will talk to Bernadette, I can't give you a result because I'm not talking to her yet.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish you to address council? Hi Louisa.
Hi, so I'm Louisa Sagendrough, I live on Valentine Road and I was the one who wrote a letter with my concerns about a once very quiet street. That thirty years ago I bought, instead of buying on Central Avenue, I bought on Valentine and I bought on Valentine for a purpose. And now with the rerouting of the school traffic, it is absolutely detrimental on my street in the mornings and in the afternoons. And what worries me the most are the walkers, not only the children, the dog walkers, the adults taking their children to school. I've never, ever, in thirty years, seen Valentine like I see it every morning now. It is disturbing. I am beyond upset that there was no other, what I did was, so what I want to tell you is on the action line, I'm gonna put, I was able to do some of my own videoing. Not only of Valentine, but the cars going over Valentine, going down Radcliffe, making the turnaround me lane, coming all the way back around. Because most of them do not make a right to go on to, to Springfield Avenue. Cause it's too hard to make the left out of Springfield Avenue. Okay, what they do is loop right back around and go right back down Cent, uh, Valentine Road. So for, from seven, you'll see in the video, uh, there's a lull in the beginning of the video to show you what the normal Valentine Road was. And then this constant swishing of cars, you'll see kids jumping onto the grass, um, you'll see the bikers. My area was always a heavy walking area, always because of the footbridge, right? But now that footbridge is not, you got very few kids walking from Valentine or Radcliffe or any of the other surrounding streets. So you've just got the parents dropping them off there now. I don't know what studies were done when they decided that they were gonna take a main throughway to get to the high school and middle school and put it on to a side street in New Providence was. I don't know, I don't know what study would tell you that that was the answer. Because Valentine is very narrow. Listen, we haven't even hit the bad weather yet. The leave, the pile of leaves aren't on the street yet, the snow isn't piled out there yet. None of that is even part of my worry at this point. And that would happen in the driveway, never, ever has that ever happened to us, never. Listen, you helped magnolia them speed tables, you took my stop sign away, which now increased speed as well, right? So do those, whatever you put up on the, you know, the tree to, to do the traffic and all, when this bad weather starts. Listen, Bard hasn't even started to, so they're just taking it down, right? What's gonna happen with those influxes of people? What's that gonna do to my street? Did we think about that, was any of that thought about?
The police did think about a lot of different things. You know what, I'm gonna send it back to the Traffic Division and let them look at it.
I mean, I, I just.
Like you said, I, I can't imagine the people on Valentine want sidewalks.
Listen, that's gonna, I'll be flung on by that, we know that. Sidewalks don't happen in a year or two, we know that. Listen, that's not the only problem. The amount of traffic that was put onto a side streets that not even wide enough to begin with.
I, I, I hear what you're saying.
And we haven't even considered all the new building that's coming in. If they had, I don't know that they would have thought that this was such a smart idea.
If they're coming from board, they wouldn't be going down Valentine.
Well, where are they gonna go? They're not gonna be going down uh, the road you just made a one-way. They're not gonna go all the way around town.
Louisa, I'm not gonna argue with you, we'll, we'll send it to the Traffic Division.
But don't tell me they're not gonna use Valentine. Half of the town is using it now. Why would they go all the way around town to get to the high school when they can do it right off of Central Avenue onto Valentine? It's not true.
Okay, anyone else wish to address council?
Like I say, this wasn't my idea. I was at uh, Lantern Hill um, on Sunday with my signs, defend our trees and um, Officer Bouska, maybe it was? Very respectful gentleman came along and said, this belongs in front of the council. And um, I don't know what good it's gonna do, but I, I just want to go on record on um, a couple of things. There's an article in the New York Times last year, what technology could reduce heat deaths to trees? It goes on to say how trees um, lowered the temperature to ten degrees in the city, okay? There are quite simply the most effective um, strategy and technology we have to guard against heat in the cities. Twenty twenty, highest carbon rate ever recorded in human history, highest uh, global temperatures ever recorded. Um, and science says the most important thing to do is to save our trees. Now, we all know what happened at Lantern Hill, I sent everyone here a certified copy um, by mail of all the evidence. It's, and it's on my website, you know, hundreds of. Of soil. Last year, at the same time, I was out there trying to save a two-hundred-year tree. And in my video, I compared that tree, it was all yellow, to a tree down below that wasn't buried in three or four-foot contamination. And I was saying that it could be saved. It's dead, it just died, another six trees will be die dead by probably spring. Um, right next to it are two huge oats like this, again, buried. You'll always have to do is look at my website, um, any of the pictures, buried in four-foot of contaminated soil. Um, I didn't want to know about thirteen fraudulent CEOs. Uh, I was at this meeting, as I mentioned before, for eighteen sixteen, Disarno was there.
Excuse me, to call him Mr. Disarno.
Mr. Disarno, okay?
We treat you with respect, Louisa. You treat us.
Well, it's hard considering all the crimes he committed, I'm sorry. But excuse me, Mr. Disarno was at that meeting and he can tell you that um, uh, Keith Lynch said the place was polluted from years of plowing. A month later, there was another meeting, which you said was Candlewood uh, Residence, which was a private meeting. You knew that I had the pictures of them so, um, uh, screening that soil and you threatened to have me arrested for. Somebody sent me the link, let me finish, let me finish.
You got, you got.
Somebody, somebody sent me the link last week of uh, the last time I was here to meet. Okay, and they said, and, and at the end, after I left the room, Al, okay? You told everybody that I wasn't telling the truth, okay? Now this is a flyer that's out there, shameful facts, town officials Alan Morgan, Keith Lynch, Andy Hipsett, Douglas Marvin, Peter Disarno, hid the contamination at Lantern Hill and allowed hundreds of yards of soil to be illegally graded on the hillside. Their criminal emissions killed dozens of old trees, destroyed natural drainage patterns, increased flooding. Perhaps the worst thing they did was knowingly allow the pollution of our groundwater. Every time it rains, it puts it more.
It's in your comments, it's over.
Yeah, thank you, it's all you guys, I'm, they're gonna love you in jail, especially you. Mr. Rizzo, Mr. Rizzo, that's what they're gonna call him in jail, let me tell you. I'm glad you get a big smile out of it, you know, why don't you take a look? Why don't you take a look at what they, we have a couple flyers here.
She even stubbed a leaf.
Yeah, we have a couple flyers here, here. You need a despicable lawyer, call Borough Attorney Paul R. Rizzo, outright liar. Now tell the people that I'm not telling the truth, huh? Tell them I'm not telling the truth.
I didn't say a word, in fact, you know what?
Yeah, you tell them to see my face sometime.
I also live on Valentine Road. I'm looking at the situation, both sides. I understand what had to be done, it's a reason to protect our, our kids at the high school, very important, even though my children's long graduated. I think what we gotta do is just try to control things. We got, we do have fast-moving vehicles on Valentine and yes, Elaine, my wife, almost. got run over the other day walking the dog. Hey, it's a narrow street. Three things I suggest. Number one, Mayor Morgan and I talked about paving the road earlier on. Road's in bad shape. I think we need some speed bumps. Bring the stop sign back. Have a two-way stop at Magnolia. That's a major sidewalk lesson there. And number three, our crossing guard at Valentine, he's getting killed. The added traffic is just putting a met crazy workload on. I think about putting one of those flashing signs on also. I mean, I understand the situation. You're not, you can't change back what's been done. And, but let's control so we can slow these people down and stuff.
Yeah, no, I.
And also making, um, put it out there that please use the pool parking lot to drop off kids. It would help.
I'm sure they're supposed to go.
I don't think anybody knows that.
Oh, yeah, that high school has set out stuff.
Really?
And we say, yeah, people do, they take the shortest route.
Yeah, I know.
You know, it's just human nature. But, you know, we'll try and make some improvements.
I just, I just, I get concerned because the road's tight as you know.
I know it is.
And the leaves just, you can see it now with the piles starting. Kids are really getting into the road.
I know. I.
Thank you.
And uh, as I discussed with you, those digital flashing lights are on order and they're going on at the corner of uh Valentine and Central, right? Those digital ones?
Cause I know a crossing guard actually puts his own out right now.
Yeah, yeah.
I can also, as a liaison, I can also talk to Dr. Murchelli and also to Mr. Henry, who's the principal of the high school. And they can also send out a note just to remind everybody to be careful and speed everywhere else. And, and we'll, we'll uh put it out to the PTAs and stuff like that.
Thank you.
I do understand, Louisa, I'm not, you know, no, but you know, I understand. What's that?
What's there, you know what I'm saying? We've got to help what's happened. We can't continue with because God forbid the way those cars are on Red Street now somebody gets hit. Then we're in trouble.
When the cold weather comes, kids aren't gonna walk in school.
Oh, you're right about that.
And it was weather's one thing, but when you start getting cold weather, you know, these kids aren't gonna be walking. And we're concerned, you know, we're concerned. We see it every day. We don't want anybody hurt. So we're concerned about that as neighbors and kids walk by every day. Louisa's right. That Valentine's load, the people walking the dogs and, and just elderly people walking and, and like, you can see people beating the horn and, and some people jumping on the grass because they don't know what to do. And the big thing is, is when you see the, the video, you're gonna say, my God, because you're gonna see these cars go back and forth, okay? Quickly, especially for the parents who are late. When they're late.
Oh, right. I know, I, I've seen Marion having, I mean, right here. Um, did you, did you send that uh video to the, to the borough?
I'm gonna send, how do you, want me to send it to the link? It's YouTube link uh to the um.
To the action line. Yeah, please.
It's, it's, it's a drone and I brought a large of the drone plus the video.
And it's all timed and sped up.
It's set up so they.
Okay, yeah. Send it to the action line. We'll get it to the traffic bureau. We'll take a look at it. Okay? Yeah. I hear you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish you to address counsel? See, no one. I declare the public hearing closed. I need uh motion for items 1 through 7, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Local, please.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Hi.
Mr. DeSarno?
Hi.
Mrs. Joffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes.
Mrs. McKnight?
Yes.
Mrs. Belisca?
Hi.
You know what? I need a motion for adjournment. All favor?
Hi.
No, so be it. Okay, everybody be safe out there. Election Day's coming. Don't forget to vote and happy Halloween. Good night, folks.